Okay, it's five thirty and we have a full, full house. Everyone is here. I will bring the meeting to order. Everyone should have gotten a copy of the minutes from the last meeting that were emailed out by Rachel. Any additions, changes, or et cetera from the minutes from last meeting? Now that would be from the people who approved the minutes. Can you say that all the papers through the minutes from last meeting south? Any votes? Okay. They're approved. One item in their whole business tonight, rezon the property at eighteen twenty east north from C three to C two. Question by Mr. Oliver Godwin. Last evening, boy. So, we're gonna lick this cap one more time. And we've got a number of our commission members that weren't here last time to hear the discussions, so for the sake of consistency, I would give Mr. Carrington and Mr. Godwin an opportunity to quickly go through one more time what you guys are asking to do. Mr. Godwin?
Yes, sir. I'm asking for a rezon of the property, C three to C two. So, I will have more chances of trying to set it even more deeper with the change of game. That's all I'm trying to do.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you, sir. Ms. Bentley, would you care to speak again?
Yes, sir.
Props at all.
Maybe they're just kind of caught chewing. So, I'm just kinda seeing if somebody has a better hope. Okay. Kinda see the map. I'm sure y'all really might be surprised then. Magnolia Planning Commission and Chair Corret. Mr. Carrington said at the last meeting, quote, "I think our community is going down the tubes and we are hurt." Yes, our city has had quite a few economic setbacks in the past few years, and we need some more larger industries providing jobs, but I disagree about it going down the tubes. I see lots of good things happening in Magnolia. More building on the bypass, buildings on the bypass and in the business industrial park. Pride in our town by the S A U students. Other businesses opening or ones have closed. And the most important thing, tons of support and generosity from volunteer groups for individuals, schools, and worthy causes. Before I get further into what I'm wanting to say for our neighborhood citizens, taxpayers, and property owners, I would like each of you Planning Commission members to think about how you would feel in our place if you lived for a redo on Marcella Avenue and Ramona or Green Street. Hopefully, each one of you have driven around the neighborhood by now, noted the twenty-five homes in this area along with a new one being built, and especially noted the uneven geography of Mr. Oliver Godwin's property located in eighteen twenty North Street, Z on C three. All of the homes located in this area are residential one except for his, which originally was, and was changed to C three in two thousand ten with no objections from us. Businesses in a C three zoning do represent community and neighborhood oriented uses. Any business locating there would have adequate yard and control of coverage of lot by building as well as quiet nature of operation, the important factors for a C three zoning as defined by the current Magnolia zoning plan. Number one, North Street is a street and will never be a highway unless so designated by the state. If it were, it would be very short. Also, many, many additional land acquisitions for wideaway extensions, widening, and relocation of utilities again would have to be made. Under the preceding mayoral administration, the original intent was to make North a safer street for those traveling on it, to provide turn lanes down to Jackson, especially the left-hand turn lanes at the high school and East Side so morning or afternoon school traffic would not be backed up, and to make a more beautiful and attractive entrance for visitors coming to Magnolia via North Street to various functions, especially those coming to the schools or downtown. Second, to refresh your memory, the definition of C three on page twenty-seven of the January two thousand three zoning subdivision regulations manual for Magnolia Architec's sales, quote, "The commercial zoning district C two represents highway-oriented uses. Adequate yards and control of coverage of lot by building are important factors in providing all street purpose." The neighbors on Marcella Avenue and Ramona know what the exits and entrances to their neighbors are, neighborhood is, and how fast the speed on it should be on the streets. It's just other people driving from or onto them that don't know what to watch out for and use that. In recent years, Marcella Avenue and Ramona are being used as cut-through or shortcut streets for as many people who drive on them that are cutting through use rather high or noisy rates of speed going to work or to school, which endangers or disturbs others on the street. Do you know how to try that? If Mr. Godwin's property were approved for a C two, and if a high volume traffic business were located on it, then the city of Magnolia would have to repave, curb, and especially widen Ramona. More traffic would be generated on it now, and as it is presently, it is essentially a one-car street with no shoulders. Any incoming traffic has to pull into the ditch or driveway to let another vehicle pass as experienced many times by neighbors living on it. Mr. Godwin's property is not on the highway, which still has numerous amounts of property available already designated as C two. These type of establishments are not the types that need to be in our immediate neighborhood. Saying that Mr. Godwin's property needs to be C two because across the street to the south, the property is C two is not logical. Emmanuel Baptist Church owns this property, and it is C two since it borders the highway eighty-two seventy-nine bypass. Their land area extends to the tree line on the west, over and on behind the storage buildings on the church's south. I spoke to one of the deacons at Emmanuel Baptist Church and was told that many offers had been made to them to sell some of the property. The church has refused them all and plans to use the property for future growth and needs. This answers the question that was brought up about the church's C two property designation last time. Past Ramona, the next properties north and west along North Street are zoned R one and R two. Next to the Ramona, the land in parts belonged to the school district. More than likely, the Magnolia School District will want to retain ownership of it. After that are eight individual residential homes all the way to Frederick. Coming back toward the bypass from East Side School, all the businesses and homes are residential too, in case the commission members do not retain the C three zoning. However, at the last Planning Commission meeting on May sixteenth, Chairman Corret stated three to four times to the council of my neighbors and me, quote, "You are fighting a losing battle," indicating, indicating that the Planning Commission was going to approve the C two zoning for Mr. Godwin to market his property for more personal gain to himself for more commercial-type businesses that belong on a highway. To us, that meant that no matter what we present to this commission, in order for it to comply with the January two thousand three zoning manual, the decision to make the land C two has already been made without a Planning Commission vote. Is Mr. Godwin's request more important than what fifty-two Magnolia citizens signing a petition think about this property being zoned? Or another thing to mention is twenty of the twenty-five residents along the street signed it. Three were never caught at home, one was empty, and the others felt it could cause adverse problems to their jobs or other activities. That's a solid representation of immediate neighborhood citizens. I have the article. I have the article, and I'm sure you all remember it, that in January two thousand sixteen, the city of Magnolia and the Magnolia Economic Development Corporation hired Barbara, an engineering and planning firm from Hot Springs for a new zoning book for how citizens want the city to develop in the next fifteen years at the taxpayer cost of seventy-two thousand three hundred sixty dollars. If our petition with fifty-two names on it and the citizens from our neighborhood who have attended these three Planning Commission meetings on this C two highway zoning for Mr. Godwin's property mean nothing and don't count to this commission, then how is this going to encourage other citizens, S A U groups, high school students, et cetera, to attend proposed numerous meetings for thoughts and suggestions to, quote, "Get on board and buy in to care about zoning in our city" or to even attend? They can see how their thoughts and ideas will be treated and won't be included in the future zoning book because other people have already predetermined how Magnolia should be zoned. Mr. Pratt encouraged us to meet and present the commission the type of business that we would object to most. Our business. So, please keep foremost in your thoughts that just because we are listing some of the commercial C two businesses that we definitely would not want next to our neighborhood, that does not mean that we approve of the C two zoning for Mr. Godwin's property. Number one, and I'll give you a copy in a moment, no mobile homes at all on individual lots. We have the new mobile home park zoning rules, but that's for mobile home parks, which is mentioned under C two, and we're still leery of the lot being subdivided and several mobile homes being zoned, and it's not a park. No automotive repairs and sales, newer use. No hotels, motels, and motor hotels. No drive-in restaurants, ice cream stands, et cetera. No automotive service stations, including the little small stores that might go with them. So, tonight, back to those two main questions we need as a Planning Commission. One is the object of this meeting about Mr. Godwin's property at eighteen twenty North Street to be rezoned from C three to C two to get his build from Mr. Carrington and him more options to sell his property at a higher cost? Or is it about remembering what is best and most compatible commercial zoning of the property for the residents of the neighborhood and the city of Magnolia? So, thank you for your time and patience in listening to our neighborhood decisions.
Any other things you have any questions for?
Can you repeat those? Oh, I'm sorry. I have copies for you. Just a moment. We also copy for you, in case you don't have your notebooks with you, the page twenty-seven that has the C one, C two, C three, and the different things that are in it, so more to take on a tactic than. Does anybody have some?
What are you prepared with all the statements?
That's how we work in our neighborhood.
I understand. And I told you last time that I certainly understand and appreciate the position of the... I do want to clarify one thing.
Yes, sir.
What I said last time was strictly my opinion. I will attest, and anybody here can attest, there's been no, at least not by me, no polling of members, there's no predetermined. I haven't spoken with anyone. How are you gonna vote? That's gotta happen after that, sir. You have my word.
Okay.
I think what I said last time, or at least my intention last time, was whether it passes now or not, it keeps coming back, and my opinion is that based on what I feel like the city's intentions was for that thoroughfare and the original planning and zoning regulation, my opinion is that's where it's gonna be someday. It may not be tonight. And I said last time, it may be voted down this time, it may be voted down in twelve months from now, and twelve months from then, but I think one of these days it's gonna happen. That's just my opinion. Certainly, and that's a pretty good one. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify or add a third reason that we're here to the truth that you gave, and I think it's really the primary reason is that we're here to determine if current zoning presents a hardship to the position that Mr. Godwin is dealing with his property. I believe that's generally the reason we're here, to determine when a hardship is caused by a zoning and if it's necessary to change it or bring it here.
Fair point. And any discussion on the commission? Y'all, I mean, look over this document and say before, I'm commending this book. So, at this point, if, and we need some discussion regarding where the commission feels like this matter stands, it's completely your prerogative to take this document into consideration. We've certainly a number of times in the past dealt with motions that had exclusions and line item limitations on it, cases extra green space, et cetera. So, it's considered good. Yeah, that needs to be addressed, right? I just, you know, I'm always talking about why, you know? I'm watching by your sound, you know, by time you do that. I think you got, thanks to you guys for putting some out, putting on paper, you know, that definitely makes our job easier on making decisions, but I think it's something to be thought about. And, you know, me personally, I'd like to consider y'all's proposition on things to exclude or include and do promote or look at as if it were applied to, to those, and see if there, I don't know if there's anything that's gonna counter on things to be considered or added to this. That's just kind of my thoughts. And I think it's really, you know, my thoughts. Can I say it again? Uh, not so, I mean, this is my first review of Ms. Bentley's address. I mean, like I said, after a vote, we need to take a vote tonight. Please, I mean, it's been talked through. Jeff and Doc?
I'd like to ask Mr. Godwin a question. You stated that you just wanted to rezon the property to make it easier for you to sell. Simple question, do you have any rule?
I'm sure I don't, and I didn't know. I've got a few other things to say, and I don't know where this lady comes up with. I'm trying to get some money because I have one in my pocket that you had them went down. So, and her and all of her. To me, like, whether y'all make a decision tonight, she's gonna run this show. Yeah. So, if y'all gonna let her run it, y'all let her run it. But that's y'all's decision. Y'all are the ones here to make the decision, not her.
You're right. Nobody's running the show.
Well, she sure acts like it.
We're certainly trying to give everybody equal representation here. She's got a dog in the back like you do.
How she do? She do down there.
Understood. You get an answer?
I got it.
Counsel, if I see any questions? Got it. So, the chair would entertain a motion. Would you proceed, credible or kill it? So, we need to move on to decide on where we go.
I agree that we need to move on and make a decision, and I personally feel like the current zoning does represent a hardship, so for purposes of expressing our opinion with a vote, I make a motion that we rezon the property from C three to C two with these five reservations not being allowed with this rezon.
Just a second. So, what do you think? Let's all go into our conversations here. By putting all five of these in, does it put any additional hardship on Mr. Godwin?
Yes. Well, it doesn't. It doesn't remove as many as standard would, but if, I feel like if that motion fails with those in there and someone wants to make a motion to grant it without those exemptions, then that would be an option. So, that's why I'm making a motion that gives the neighborhood just about as much say as they could ever have, and then if we want to see the difference matters, that motion is voted down, the motion can be remade, changed from C two to C three with no exception. If a number so cheap.
I think we should properly approach it as a member. If somebody disagrees with the latest motion to approve these five exclusions, then we would entertain a amendment at this point to amend your motion to change the exclusion. If we voted down as proposed, it probably will get us. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss the no drive-in restaurant, ice cream stands, because I feel like that is somewhat inappropriate, um, reasons that would be, you know, off, not off the bypass, near the schools. I'm not, I may as well.
Yeah, and I mean, that's my situation. I mean, in trying to make a motion in case to rezon if C two with these, I'm going through this as fast as I can, but I would almost think that not much changes by just excluding as easy a time to grace as possible, which I've been studying and doing it quickly. I'm not sure that anything changes the label of C two from C three by excluding. And that's mine, that I guess that's one.
I would like to throw a motion if the mayor will withdraw.
So, before still some discussion, we'll go to the room.
I mean, we already, didn't we already say that no mobile homes can be on that lot anyway?
It does not, it does not need qualifications for a mobile home.
So, that one doesn't even, number one, doesn't even matter.
That's different than a mobile home park, please. Individual mobile homes on lot.
I think that might be their...
David just asked a question.
In order to have individual mobile home lots, it would have to be some R three. It's not large enough to make a mobile home park anyway, so individual mobile home lots...
You can't put an individual mobile home in a C two.
No. R three only.
We're not sure about that.
I live on Ramona, so I've got a vested interest in this. And I've thought about it long and hard, but I just feel like the natural progression of Magnolia and East North Street is for that to get to C two. As Joe said, maybe not tonight, but I think it's eventually gonna happen. I think that is the whole idea behind improving, widening East North Street, so that is officially a commercial thoroughfare all the way up there. Those are my thoughts. And I agree, Ms. Bentley, it's not gonna be a highway. It's never gonna be called Highway North.
Well, that was indicated last time.
But here, there are, there are highway appropriate uses that can be on a, on a busy street as well, so it's semantic center. Do you need a motion to? Or not?
And what about, I mean, hotels, motels, I mean, there goes. Could that sit on that lot anyway?
It would be a fair, it would be a fair, it would be a fair. That's not a...
Y'all turned down my motion with your shirt. It doesn't matter. I've been bagged, I want today.
Okay. So, lack of a motion, we're moving on.
Well, I'll make the motion again, I guess. So, I think we all have a vote on it. Turn it down, that's one, that's one that we all vote on. I'll make, I'll make a motion to practically be rezoned from C two to C three with no reservation.
C three to C two.
C three to C two with no reservation. With no, no consideration for these options all requested by the network.
Any questions? We'll call a vote.
I just feel like we should take into consideration some of their requests, but we asked them to do last night.
I feel same. I mean, I, you know...
I feel like there should be some sort of compromise, I don't know what the requirement should be.
As you, as you mentioned, green space and, you know, as someone mentioned, you know, appropriate green space, appropriate, you know, appropriate rest, you know, as we're being served, appropriate citizens, you know, year to year, I mean, we're in a state one hundred percent, one hundred percent on both sides of the, of the issue, you know, I think, and it's Washington, about people besides requests, but I'm not sure about the property to move that further. Somebody's gonna go away and have their, you know that? Yeah. I should know that, maybe, of, of, with a plot on submission of further requests, because that motion was denied to include, you know...
requests, that motion was denied to include, uh, the requested, uh, provisions, made another run at it.
Yeah, and, you know, submission has to be made by the next, you know, the next.
Well, I don't like to say, or will say, as far as any other delay other than a vote. Uh, I mean, if somebody wants to pass me a no, with which of these five you want me to, like a motion, hey, we're gonna do that, somebody's in my ear, so, I don't know. But, this zoning has been in place, and this neighbor, this neighborhood has had these benefits and all, for probably thirty-two, twenty-eight to thirty-five years, and I don't mind it keeping having them, but I just think we need to vote, and let, let Mr. Gordon know if he's got to wait another year, or what the deal is, because I can't see, we didn't want all five of these, and we seem hesitant to make a vote on none of them, and I don't really see where any, what's going to change in one month.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, I'll say this, I think we should definitely allow for driving restaurant, ice cream stands, and then the, I mean, the automotive service stations, that's a gas station, correct? I think, I think that's appropriate.
So, so, move, if you feel so inclined, move to amend license motion to add.
But is there anything else that anybody else feels, that's my question.
I think signage is an issue.
That's covered.
Signage, signage, green space, uh, walls, et cetera, covered in the book.
And it said too on page twenty-eight, when it's abutting of residential, um, you let those extra green spaces go there.
Julia, which one of them's not, are you saying one, three? No, two.
I'm saying, well, I don't know what, I'm saying that number four and number five shouldn't definitely be.
Number one doesn't apply, right?
Yeah, number five, so you're looking at, you're saying to three, which you don't, you're looking at the civic provision, you should be.
I think number four and five should be an option for Mr. Gordon.
So what you're saying is one, two, and three should be the two?
I, I, I guess, I mean, I'm, yeah, yeah.
Let's just be clear, four and five are already allowed if we go with this thing too, so.
Mm-hmm. My, well, I don't know, I don't know if hotels are, I don't have, I'm either way on her, number three.
I can't, I can't make a point.
I know, I'm just, I don't know if the, the condition.
I will accept the amendment to my motion.
So, yeah, she has to agree to amend this. There, there is some noted in the book about, about space, but I'm not sure.
Cause I'm not sure that, I guess, if I'm there on the corner, I'd like to see some sort of privacy, yes, provision put in so that if there is something that goes in there.
There already is.
There's one on the back.
Yeah, but if somebody comes in and owns a property, they can tear it down, so my thing, what I'm saying is, probably this needs to stop, or do a bill to take care of that, that's all I'm saying.
And, and you can go so far as to say this, that you didn't want to have privacy, or there's something, there's, there's, there's.
Julia mentioned it a while ago, it talked about twenty-five feet, um, abutment of green space and screening.
Minimum sides are ten feet with opaque screening as required, and minimum rear of twenty-five feet is required for buildings in the commercial zoning district. Twenty-five foot landscape buffer may be substituted for the opaque screening, provided that the landscaping is of such high intensity as to block any lighting from the commercial district.
So, that's, that's probably, I think that's a priority.
So, I'll move to make an amendment that Mr. Gordon's property goes from C three to C two to the.
Move, move to amend license motion.
Okay.
To add restrictions of no mobile homes, no automotive repairs and sales, and no hotel hotels.
Okay.
Correct?
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's right.
Add one, two, three, as, as I look for. The last, you accept that on?
Yeah.
No, four, four and five, they're the right.
They can do four and five, but number three.
Oh, now, you're doing this, that math, now, just.
Correct. Which one's right, now, for so few? Do I hear a second on the, on the amendment? So we'll move to vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, license motion to add exclusions of no mobile homes, no automotive repairs and sales, no hotels, motels, and motor hotels, say aye.
I'm, I'm, um, I'm not sure, I'll go about three. I want, I want to, I just want to make sure I'm clear, I was saying, no hotels, no motels, no motor hotels, if, even if we get a C two.
Correct.
Well, there's, now, all this on the C two property matter, do they have these restrictions?
They don't, Mr. Gordon, but that's not what we're worried about tonight, we're just worried about your lives, sorry. Um, so, you, you voted on the amendment, I'll always say no. You opposed the amendment, I will vote, okay, amendment passes. So the motion on the floor right now is to grant the rezoning of these lots in question from C three to C two with exclusions of no mobile homes, no automotive repairs and sales, no hotels, motels, and motor hotels. Agreed? Any discussion? We're going to do a roll call, though. Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Good. That, Mary?
Yes.
Yeah. I believe that's.
Oh, that's sixty dollars, bro.
She took notes every day. Anything else on that one? Moving on to new business, Cynthia Ingram has a request for nine oh five Hilltop, various places manufactured homes in that lot, less than sixty-five feet with, is somewhere here?
Putting in, I'm thinking of, in the time, think that the commission will allow the addition of finished a lot of, but the no paying, that the home is a part of the lot.
How big is the lot?
The lot is fifty-nine and seven.
Little over fifty-nine and a half. It joins your existing property?
Yes.
You have a home on your property or a mobile home?
A home.
Um, paid in or rented?
Possibly.
Any questions?
Only thing, I was, I was by there today, only thing I, like you, especially on the dead end of the street, there's a barricade outside of your street, just worried about fire, access, got to be there, a bit fiery, I want to make sure they can get there and get in and get put out, you know, I don't, there's a person here, the best of that, five one, it's just, there's no way in there, you best to do this.
What was that, what was that lot?
Is it, is it, is it flat spot on the left, have little stakes?
Yes.
Into the ground?
Yes.
Yeah, the lot size looks appropriate, I guess, just the rest.
In the past, we did have a, a couple of weeks, maybe a month ago, a five truck lived there, and returning, and I looked, and ordered to get it to work, so, five truck came in and it was false call, but, uh, and then, of course, they go to the, they have adult educational net, you know, you have to, that system.
Yeah, and there a barricade or something like that at the end of the street?
It's a barricade down there, they was, that was.
Almost as temporary.
It's, it's been there for a while to allow, there was too many, she tried, people come in and just cut through the door.
And she can come in.
With adult education?
You don't have to go around this, or you can come in.
With adult ed?
Well, come out, you don't need to go to the barricade, barricade, she's just saying that.
It's the visual space right there.
Out of the, out of the, oh, you're.
The trunk of the garage.
Okay, I mean, that's not, that sounds great, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm not a fire, I don't know, yeah, I'm not a fire.
Um, I haven't had a chance to see the property, is there anybody who would be upset?
There's someone.
What is going to be upset?
This is a lot, this is, this is my land, and adult education is on this side, and stuff, it's, it's, it's the bank alike, and then my home, and then I work at a beauty shop, and, and, you know, I'm trying to, I don't know how to do, what, that's it.
Yep. Any additional questions?
There's, there's, I don't, there are problems with mobile homes, and I believe there's just going to be setbacks anyway, but, is that tripping over anything, about, is it two separate lots, or is it the same lot the house is on, is saving, is that any, you have any concern?
Two lots.
All right, so that's not an issue at all? If it don't make money, how bad you go down, and I'm not hurting anything.
I'm moving to approve the barriers. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the barriers, that's a question, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
You may. Do I have a second on German?
Yep.
Thank y'all, appreciate the discussion.